Okay, alright, well, thank you everybody for coming. Um, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting, um, Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We can start by Commissioner Roehl call. So, I'm Olivia Moe, I'm present. Giuliano Pereira?
Yeah, here.
Kenneth Seal?
Here.
James Boogers?
Present.
And Corinne Wilson? Perfect. Also with us, we have, um, city worker, or city employee Rebecca Deming and Jamie Varell. Okay, so, we let the record note that Brian Awkward and Susan Torgerson are excused from tonight's meeting. You have to vote on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Okay, so now I would like to, um, open up for public comment on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public that are here to comment on non-agenda items? Nope? Okay, so let the record show that we have opened at six thirty-one and we are closing also at six thirty-one because there's nobody here. Um, now, we would like to, um, would anybody like to make a motion to approve last meeting minutes? That was in September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Anybody have any, uh, corrections that they want to add? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the September eighth minutes.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Boogers? Can it by Commissioner Seal? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, okay. Okay, so we have a couple of minutes. Okay, so now, I think we can open up, um, for public comment on tonight's meeting, which is the transportation element, um, and the Bakes Marina DA. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak on that?
Well, so, let's first go ahead and, um, start with the, any introduction or staff report on the transportation element, um, to get you, yeah, then we go to public.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we have Drew here again, from, uh, Perrin Pierce, yeah.
Hey, everyone again. So, yes, Drew, I'm Lauren Furth, for those who haven't met me, from Perrin Pierce.
Why don't you come up, show them your seatings, so you can pick up on the recorder at least?
Definitely. So, I believe you should have all received a link to our final document, as well as a track changes version of our content, uh, from what you saw the last time we were here a month ago. So, I just wanted to give a quick, a quick update of, of what changed in the document from, from the last time. So, last time, we had a good discussion about roundabouts, so we wanted to add some content there. We added a call-out box in the document with just some general information about roundabouts and some data from Wash Dot. And, in addition, we added a policy, uh, to emphasize prioritizing pedestrian safety at roundabouts. And ultimately, you know, this is a, a high-level policy document. Once we get into defining projects and the actual design of those projects, that's when a lot of that nitty-gritty in terms of, 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 of design, uh, safety features, uh, for the roundabout will, will take place. A lot of it is, i- in the details. So, uh, more to come on that. Um, Tom wanted to mention to you that, so every year, the, uh, the tip is updated, so that's also a good place to, to discuss safety, uh, for, for those roundabouts that they're, they're going to include on the tip. Also, we talked a bit about, uh, bus stop amenities, not just public transit, but for, for school bus stops. So, we added a policy on that, for the city to collaborate with the school district to cite bus stops and, and hear the recommendations on where to, where to cite bus stops. And, in addition, we want to require new developments to, to, uh, either cite bus stops at, at their development, or, or contribute to, to the placement of bus stops elsewhere in the city. We also added a call-out box describing the Snoqualmie Valley Mobility Coalition. So, the, this was in relation to the discussion about transit service. So, so the city doesn't have a direct control over transit service, but as a member of, of that coalition, they can advocate in, in partnership with other cities in the area for more transit service for those, um, you know, on behalf of those cities, um, to the transit agencies, King County Metro, Snoqualmie Valley Transportation. So, we wanted to, to emphasize that the city is actively advocating on behalf of the city for, for more transit service.
Is that a new po- uh, policy, you said?
That, that was just informational, so we just added a call-out box just to emphasize that, um, in case people were reading through the policies and, and were wondering, well, does the city want new transit service? What's going on there? So, we just wanted to add some, some information.
Do you recall where that is? Isn't it off?
It's, it's in, it's actually in the policy chapter, um...
Okay. I'm giving them a summary tomorrow morning, so...
Okay.
Excited to hear that.
Yes.
So, okay. I'll look forward ahead of time.
And then, the other big update from the last time we were here was, we worked with Tom to identify a, a estimate of long-range funding available. And so, with that, we were able to create a project list that added some projects from what's on the tip. So, uh, in the project list at the end there, this is in terms of long-range projects. Uh, you'll see we added a few. One, a traffic signal at North Bend and Main, which would be contingent upon a signal warrant. If, if you haven't heard of signal warrant, the idea is, there, there's a certain level of volume that has to occur before a signal is warranted, and that has a lot to do with, with safety and, and research that the FHWA has done. So, uh, and, and the idea is, you wouldn't put the signal in until the, the signal warrant has been met, for safety reasons. We also added a project for bus stop improvements at both the North Bend parking ride and the library in downtown. Um, uh, the library was cited both by Snoqualmie Valley Transportation and the school district as a place where, with frequent, uh, bus drop-offs. We added a study to look at truck stop, uh, circulation and wayfinding signage. Uh, we talked a little bit about that last time. So, this would be a study, just to look at what could be improved there. We, we were discussing, um, possible one-way, uh, one-way circulation as opposed to two-way at the driveways and, and how to sign that, so, so that study would look into that. And the last project on the list would be paving Snoqualmie Valley Trail within the city limits. And we, we ran all of those by, by Tom and, and city staff. So, you'll, you'll see all of that in the, in the document update that we just provided.
I don't think I saw that updated with the, with the, you know, with the red line.
Yeah, the track change is that? I didn't see it.
I know.
Yeah.
So, we received that. So, I did get you going through it, because it's...
Yeah.
They were two really big documents, so I wonder if we didn't link?
It should have been a, um, Word document attached to the package.
Yeah, so...
I know, I, I didn't think we'd write on it either.
Oh, and Tom said it would have been sent in a separate email, not in the packet.
Oh.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you going through.
Sure. And sorry you didn't receive that before, yeah, I'm not sure what hap-...
You guys did have the link for at least the final document, so...
Oh, the link, the link isn't?
Just not the, they didn't have the track changes, but they had the docu, the final document.
I see, okay.
Oh, boy, man. Yeah, unless it kicked it back. Alright.
Can you remind me again who these, for these amenities, um, what, by, does it come out of, like the benches and the shelters for the trans- transit?
Well, there's all different places it can come from. Um, there's impasses, there's, um, grants, there's, um, what does REIT stand for?
REITs.
Right, the, it's the, it's a sales tax on...
Real estate access tax?
Yeah, real estate access tax. Um, and...
Do you have any special improvement districts that do have...
The, the transportation...
There's a TBD, right?
The TBD, so there is a TBD, um...
And then, who is physically responsible for maintaining?
So, usually the city. Um, you can contract with agencies if they, you know, I've, I've dealt with other cities that, like, if, um, Seattle Metro came all the way there and they wanted a shelter, that they would maintain that shelter, but generally, it's the city.
And do we have...
Because it's our right away.
Do we have, like, a staff or the department right now, like, let's say we put up a shelter to maintain it?
It would fall under the same street maintenance, is what they...
That's really good, okay.
King County Metro has, has a, a template for, for bus stop amenities and, and a, um, a set of contractors that they use and materials that they, they have a consistent product for, for all their bus stops, but ultimately, it's the city who's responsible for maintaining the, the, and obviously, that's why all the King County Metro stops look the same, but, but the city actually controls them.
Hmm. Okay. Do you have any other questions to ask or discussions?
I guess, just with the, well, just with the roundabout zone that you, you know, called some of that out, so, um, so can you go over again how that would work?
Since I don't have the call-out in front of me.
Let me just get on, I'm having trouble finding you.
Yeah, where are you?
So, are you looking at the final document?
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you that.
We just emailed it out, so if you have asks or...
That was the track change, but the, um, other one...
Yeah, the track change.
Yeah. That's, that's different than the final document.
No, I know, but they were looking for the track change. I was just letting them know, we just edited out it.
Yeah. It, and it was weird, I tried again to send it with packet and it was like bumping it out. So, maybe it was the size, emailed it separate and it worked.
Oh, I see it, it's on page seventeen.
Page seventeen?
Yeah.
The packet seventeen or the...
It's page seventeen of the final.
Okay.
Would you mind coming and sitting here and watch for people who come in, so that... And someone who, I think, if they waited in the waiting room a little longer than I'd like?
Did you have, still have a question, or are you...
I, I, I just...
Okay. Um, one quick one I have, um, so, the long-range project, what was the range of that? Like, like ten years out, was there...
Oh, twenty years, yeah.
Like, potentially up to twenty years now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so the idea is for this to be consistent with the overall comprehensive plan update, so that, that, um, is...
Okay.
The period would be twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-four.
Okay. And the long range would, would be potentially beyond that? Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, they, I, I had read after, um, uh, the roundabout discussion that, um, roundabouts decrease emissions pretty significantly. Is that correct? I mean, I read it online, so who knows?
So, I think, I, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the, the reference was, but I'm, I'm guessing it's, it's tied to congestion, so if a roundabout were to improve congestion, you know, idling, then that would have a, a knock-on effect for, for less pollution. I, I'm guessing that's what, where they're coming from there.
I'm guessing less noise, too, from the stop and dole.
Yeah.
I think my whole thing, I mean, not my whole thing, but part of my history with the roundabouts is, I do feel like it depends on where we end up with the general plan. Where some areas of the city, it feels like it works really well, you want people to get moving through it, but if we're creating a place in this, this area, then that doesn't lend itself to a roundabout as well. If you're creating a place, you're wanting people to stay, or a roundabout is getting people out, you know? And so, I think it really, for me, I just feel like, we need more information about the general plan, for me to say, oh, yeah, this is great, or no, I don't like this, you know, it's, it depends on the situation.
Hmm.
So, what you're saying is, like, it's all doesn't really work?
We'll open it to the public. Right now, it's just a commissioner discussion, so, as soon as they're done asking questions, we will open it to the public for your comment.
Right, but it would be something that I, you know, I, right now, I think that I'm on board with the transportation plan, but with some flexibility to be able to go back and revisit the roundabout situation after we've gone through the rest of the general plan.
I, I can tell you, if it helps, we are working on a, um, complete street corridor plan for North Bend Way, which would be the primary place we would be trying to create place, placemaking. So, they are looking at what, what are safety features, what are slowdown features and everything, um, including where the roundabouts are and are planned. So, there, there is a secondary plan being looked at, related specifically to complete streets on North Bend Way.
Yeah, I think that's great. Um, yeah, for today and as moving forward, you know, I probably have, you know, I haven't made a motion, that's probably where I would go with it, to have a caveat saying, you know, let's revisit this portion of it, but go forward with the rest of it. But, I, I guess I didn't read the plan as being so specific as to say, roundabouts always the answer, or they're never the, it, it's just, this is one of the things that we can utilize in appropriate circumstances to keep traffic moving, to keep character in the neighborhood, and so on and so forth. So, I didn't see it as prescribing roundabouts. Uh, is that incorrect? I, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I just thought as, this is one of the solutions that's available to us.
Yeah, so the roundabouts improvements were rea- really predated the plan, so, so all of those roundabouts that are in the plan, specific locations, were on the tip that was, that was approved in, in, in May, and, and many of them were, were on prior tips before that. So, that was just in, including what was already on the tip there, so...
And the additional call-out, I think, as I read, it's the same. The additional call-out is just saying it's an additional roadway design option.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and we added that call-out box because of our discussion, and because someone reading this, you know, they will notice, yeah, there are quite a few new roundabouts, so, so we just wanted to give a heads-up of why that's occurring. You know, what are the, the considerations of, of why roundabout versus other features?
And as, you know, Planning Commission being a recommending body to City Council, I think that it's appropriate to call that out to City Council, saying you're approving the transportation plan, but let's look at the tip again.
Wish, yeah.
I can tell you, the tip doesn't come through Planning Commission, it goes straight to council.
Right, well, that's partly why I would love it to be part of our recommendation, because...
To have them look at it.
Exactly.
To look at it.
That, that it's something of a concern.
Okay. Any other questions? I had just a quick question on Policy three point one, it talks about, um, establish and implement vehicle parking maximum and reduce minimum. And then, if you kind of read on to Policy six point one, it talks about, um, encouraging more efficient use of existing public right-of-way to increase parking opportunities. Is this kind of like, we're pushing street parking, as opposed to parking lots?
Or a, a shared, a shared lot or garage. So, on the project list, there is a, a explore locations for a new shared, either lot or garage downtown. So, I think that's, Policy six point one's referring, referring to that, I believe.
Okay. And so then, three point one, parking maximum, so I build a store and, because I know currently we have, like, a minimum parking that you have, when you build something according to how much public would come visit and whatnot, so are we talking about getting rid of that, changing that? Is that kind of what this policy is?
So, that, that's been, uh, uh, existing policy from, from the last iteration of the plan. I think the, the idea there is, is to consider it, but not, it's not being prescriptive in this plan of, yes, we will definitely do this in all situations. It's, it's saying, we will consider it where it makes sense. And, and that's, in, in a larger planning trend, um, cities are starting to explore parking maximums instead of minimums, so that's where that's coming from. And, and also, if you think, you know, it could be in certain areas, so if downtown were to add another shared space, then maybe individual land uses don't need to provide as much of their own parking, so it could be, it could work into conjunction that way. So, Policy three point one and six point one could work in tandem.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Do, yeah, I do have a really quick question, just on the agenda. My agenda is Thursday, September eighth.
Is that the last meeting?
Yeah, well, today's the thirteenth. All right, just like a... I was just, thanks, full month, is it?
Thank you. Maybe you're looking at the minutes, so...
Yeah, yeah. And I'm even like looking at my watch, I'm like, no, it is the thirteenth. Wrong month, sorry about that.
Feels like September still, right?
I know.
Okay, one more question. So, if we go to Policy seven point eight, and I just have a, a clarification question. It's, so it says, ensure that existing development pays for transportation improvements that reduce or eliminate existing deficiencies and pays for some or all of costs to replace obsolete or worn-out facilities. Um, and then, we go on to number two, and it says, ensure that future development pays an appropriate share of the cost of the new facilities that it requires. Don't we want them to pay for the entire cost of whatever they're needing? Or am I just reading that incorrectly?
So, an example would, do you have an intersection that needs improvement? There's four different properties that benefit and need that improvement, so they would pair, they would pay for their fair share of it. Usually, it's done through, um, a latecomers agreement, where they pay for all of it, and then the other properties come, or it could be done through other means or methods.
I, I read that to be, the developer pays for what they do on the property.
Their impact.
Yeah, their impact, and then they pay a share of, you know, it might be...
And then they pay the impact fee. So, they do their improvements and pay an impact fee for the overall, their impact for the overall system.
Okay, okay.
I'm, I was trying to find the number you were saying, so...
Oh, the policy?
Yeah.
Oh, seven point eight.
Okay.
Were you asking specifically about the maintenance of facilities?
I guess I'm just asking specifically, like, if I want to build something and I need a, something, I need a stop sign or a roundabout, or a something built, like, I should be responsible paying that.
Yeah, if you need it, and it's your, warranted on your project, then yes.
Well, what if I need it, but like, it kind of benefits you, because you're my neighbor?
It usually, it depends. There's a few different situations, uh, for instance, if it's, usually when you need to build it, you have to build it to our standard, which is probably overbuilt to adjust what you need, that's when the latecomer agreement comes in. But if you just need it, then it's, sometimes first come, first served has to pay for it.
Talking roundabout, is it universal or no?
They talk...
The full roundabout, so it's not partial?
Yeah, I think it's the whole thing.
And River Run, I think, is...
They're paying, River Run is paying for theirs as well.
And then, who's going to pay to maintain those? We do?
Right, we maintain, it just, it gets added to our road path, and we maintain it, correct?
Okay.
Slow maintenance cost, though, for a roundabout, right? So...
I know, I hope so, too.
I'm wondering, too, if the wording was, was really for maintenance, which is different from capacity improvement, so the whole business with, with concurrency and, and level of service is really tied to capacity increases, so, so resolving congestion issues versus maintenance is really a separate issue from that. And, and, in theory, I, you know, maintenance is supposed to be just an ongoing cost, it's being paid for by general funds or property tax and all that.
Yeah.
Um, if we go on in number two, under seven point eight, where it says, um, future development payments shall take the form of one or more falling voluntary contributions, um, impact fees, mitigation fees, I'm confused by that word voluntary. I thought they were all mandatory.
We can accept additional payments.
Okay, this is extra, okay.
So, if someone has a DA in front of you, and we could, there could be, you know, an additional public benefit, they can add a voluntary payment.
Okay. Okay. And then, one more question for number three. I just, with total curiosity, um, it says, whenever another government agency causes transportation impacts or costs to the city, we'll make them pay us back. I, it is just so random to me, so I'm sure that there's, like, something has happened here, or like, a real-life, like, example of this happening, otherwise, we wouldn't have put it in here, right?
It can happen, definitely. I mean, it's almost like thinking about, uh, sharing a cost between different developers, is what if, what if a, a, um, impact happens just outside of city limits and it, or, or, um, a development occurs and it, it causes an impact within city limits from an outside jurisdiction? There, there's, you know, there should be a, a mechanism in place to, to talk about sharing or transferring improvement costs, that sort of thing, uh, between jurisdictions. So, yeah, that does happen.
Yeah, okay, done, that makes sense. Okay. Okay, one really quick thing for Policy, sorry, one point three.
You can stop saying really quick.
Sorry.
Um, but this might be my last one, everything else I have is just kind of small. Um, we talked about using, uh, residential streets should be designed to preserve existing trees, I love it. And then, we talked about, I think it was like adding vegetation, landscaping should be utilized to provide visual barriers, but, uh, be carefully designed not to interfere with visibility, great. I was just hoping that we could add something about landscaping being, like, native to our area.
Yeah.
Not, not everybody plants those, um, laurels that everybody loves that die, and they're not native, and...
And that, that is in our landscape plan, is a...
It's in our landscape, yeah, there's, yeah, excellent, perfect.
So, any landscaping would have to have a landscape plan.
Yeah, that, that would fall more into other policies, not necessarily into transportation.
Okay. Uh, what's a traffic calming technique?
There, there could be many, so, so, you know, most people think about speed humps or speed bumps.
Okay.
But, you know, there's, there's, could be many, many others. Rumble strips.
But mostly, what you see here is the, um, like, if you go downtown, you'll see the curb pops out. It's not just a street cur-...
It's a trap.
That's a traffic calm, that's a traffic calming, creates a visual change and barrier to calm the traffic, so, that's the kind of thing.
Or slow the traffic.
Straight away. Slow down, and, yeah.
Okay.
Even we were mentioning, street trees, street trees are a traffic calming device.
Street trees?
Just, just from, from, uh, uh, creating something that a car could potentially run into, it, it creates a traffic calming effect.
Or distraction that you look at, for you.
So, like the elk.
Pretty tricky.
There you go, the elk or traffic calming, yeah.
Yeah, the traffic calming.
Feature.
I don't get calm with the elk, girl.
Hopefully, you slow down, though. We've had some pretty devastating hits on North Bend Way, like, right in front of my house recently. Okay. Uh, Policy two point two, when we talk about implementing, um, idling policies, I know there are other policies here that talk about, and they're not calling out the traffic or the, um, truck stop, but talking about places like that, how they really should make it better, but until they do, what does a, a policy like this do mean for trucks in the winter, or like refrigeration trucks? Are they going to get fined?
Well, the, that would, in terms of fines, I think that might be outside of, of the transportation elements.
Right.
So, I, I can comment on that. But certainly, in terms of, of, there could be a, a requirement for, for electric, um, you know, use of batteries while using AC or heating, instead of idling the engine, that sort of thing, or just, or just education of, of, of those, those things that could be done, instead of just having idling trucks.
Okay. Where do you guys see that going? Do you guys see a policy like that turning into, hey, we're not allowing this anymore? And, because I know, like, uh, big cities like Chicago and New York, they have like a phone number you can call to report people.
Yeah, I mean...
Kind of the direction, where you think you want to go?
It's a policy that's out there that, you know, they would, they would be, you know, work with the police department, you know, and the public works department to create. I don't know if that's the highest priority of all these policies, um, but, yeah, I mean, there's usually, it ends up being signs and code referenced, um, and, you know, yeah, I, I doubt we go to a phone number to call and be more, the officer sees it happening.
Yeah, I'm thinking we have so many other things on our plate that we don't have.
Yeah, these aren't requirements, these are policies to look at and think about.
Okay.
A lot of newer trucks have batteries that are able to, to power electricity and, and, uh, heating, cooling in, in the cabins, so, uh, because it saves money, it saves the, the trucking companies money. So, um, a lot of that is happening, uh, on the industry side, so, it, again, this is a longstanding city policy, so, so the industry's moving that way anyway.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I, I'm done for real, if anyone else has anything? No? Okay.
Open it to public comment?
Yeah, okay, so, six fifty-nine, um, let's open up the, uh, transportation element to public comment, if there's anybody here from the public that wants to comment?
Well, apologize for...
Please, please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Kenneth Nero. I live on one one six one Forrester Boulevard southwest in North Bend. I apologize for interrupting earlier. Um, I'm going to presume that all of this information is available somewhere online with respect to the grand plan for transportation, the implementation of roundabouts in what The implementation of roundabouts in what quantity and where and at what cost? And I presume the answer is yes. Can somebody point me in the direction or send me an email about where to find it?
We can, I can give you my card and I can, you can email me and I can send you the link.
Okay, that will eliminate me asking five or six questions that are at the detail level, right? Because I'll look through it. And comma, is this something that is generally helps the residential members of the community or not?
This is a citywide policy document, so it covers all components of the city.
The point is, at what point or is there any residential involvement in terms of awareness of the plan or the cost of the plan, is the budgeting related there too?
It all goes out through public notifications and legal advertisements.
Okay.
There's a maintenance, yeah, good question to help your question. Um, was there ever a survey that was created? I know we had talked about possibly having one on the website for public input.
There, there was not a survey specific for the transportation plan.
Okay, I'm just curious. Um, I don't, I don't have a problem with roundabouts per se, as long as there is some criteria that is reviewed that suggests roundabout is the proper solution as opposed to a standard intersection. Same thing with signals. If there's an argument that says a signal should be here, then clearly one should be considered. Curious about the process. This is my first experience with your commission. I will mention the fact that in at least one of the packets a week or two weeks ago, um, there was mention of, uh, a replacement traffic speed indicator because the one that was used has been vandalized.
I think you're referring to city council again and not the planning commission.
Okay.
That wouldn't have been on this, this body's responsibility.
About that.
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. If you break things up in enough pieces, it becomes impossible to enforce any review, but.
Well, this is a recommended body to the council. They don't make any final decisions. They just recommend to city council, so this will then go on to the city council for final approval.
Okay. That's all. I didn't come for transportation anyway, I just drive, right? And don't do anything that tells me I have to drive in electric cars, I won't, ever.
Now, just so you know, sir, there is also a public notices section of our website and the draft is there, we'll get the final version there, so that's a good place to look under policy.
Yeah, and I, I completely get that, as long as there's a search function that makes it reasonable to find it, right? If you're left, if, if every resident is left to their own, um, computer skills to try and find questions or answers to questions, they're never going to ask the questions, right? Unless it's obvious or easy to navigate. It's not a criticism of your site, I'm just telling you how it is. You know, John Q. Public probably isn't a, a, a computer wizard, right? Or an HTML programmer or a Zoomer, right? Most of the residents aren't thirty years old.
Mm-hmm. Is that all your comments?
For transportation.
Thank you. Um, anyone on Zoom would like to comment, please feel free to unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment at seven oh three. Okay, so now we are going to make a recommendation tonight.
So you have a public hearing tonight, um, or sorry, you're going to make a recommendation.
Yeah, if you're ready, you can make a motion.
Yep.
Okay, do we feel like, is somebody ready to make a motion to approve the transportation element I've presented here tonight?
I think I can.
Go ahead.
Uh, I recommend to the city council the proposed transportation plan with re-review and consideration of the tip schedule regarding, uh, roundabouts as we, um, as we recommend the, the rest of the, uh, general plan.
Okay, uh, motion made by Commissioner Seal, is there a second? Okay, second made by Commissioner Correa, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, uh, motion passes, one, two, three, five to one, five to zero. Okay, um, we just have to talk about the DA now?
Yeah, so next item is the Bakes Marine Development Agreement. We'll have Jamie give the staff report.
Yeah, I will provide a summary, um, and we do have Bill Baker and, um, I think Paul Grigwar is also on. They are the owners and, um, uh, they asked me to provide a summary of their project and kind of where we're at. I'm also going to pass around, um, the development agreement, um, which I'll talk about on page four. There's one amendment and there's two public comments that were received. You guys ready to say online on Zoom? You guys tracking us? Okay, making sure.
I don't know.
She thinks she was sent it. She's thinking here, that's not her.
Oh, then yeah, yeah.
Also in your packet was, um, a version of the, um, DA, the development agreement and the staff report, so.
Yeah.
It's not back there.
So yeah, the property is located along southeast North Bend Way. It's just to the Mountside Club. And it's on a one point seven acre parcel. I can point it out to the planning commission, um.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
Big building to look, yeah.
Yes, want to make sure, so, um, and then there's the Mountside Club, so that's the parcel right there. Um, it is in the neighborhood business zone. It, um, to the east of it is an employment park zone, so it, um, busts that. And the boat and watercraft sales use isn't allowed use. So Telegraphed Properties LLC, the Bakes Marina, they submitted a complete site plan package July fifth, twenty twenty-two, and they were issued a notice of application July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And that package, uh, includes an extensive submittal and a review, um, for items like traffic, geotech, stormwater, fire, landscaping, design review of the building, and a CIPA checklist, state environmental policy checklist. So it's a, it's a pretty big submittal. Um, the building they're proposing is a one-story warehouse, which totals thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five square feet. Um, it's comprised of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred square feet of warehouse, six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five square feet of showroom, and then twenty-five hundred square feet of a mezzanine. Uh, commercial uses in this zone have a height limit of thirty-five feet, a maximum front setback of fifteen feet and a twenty-foot minimum return setback, so they meet all of those. We have completed one round of review of their full submittal package and we're awaiting a re-submittal from them. Site plan and CIPA review and most all of the planning related items, um, take a few rounds of review to get through. But I would anticipate that we could issue CIPA with the next round of review. And then full engineering and their building submittal and all that would come in following that. So the project is pretty much reviewed administratively and, but there will be one more round of public comment and that's when the CIPA determination is issued, that's a fifteen day comment period. Uh, just to note, for the notice of application, it was also a fifteen day comment period. We received one comment from the tribe, um, requesting that they follow along and make sure we do our, um, archaeological work. So tonight, uh, for the planning commission though, is to consider the applicant's request for a development agreement, um, which enables them to have the building size that they say they need for their business operation. And, um, as you guys might already know, the purpose of a development agreement is to create certainty to the applicant to consolidate numerous issues involved in a complex development project into a single controlling instrument, the DA, the development agreement, to maximize efficient use of resources at the least economic cost for the public and to strengthen the public's planning process, which is why we have a public hearing. We, you know, announced it, things like that. Uh, the staff report in your packet details the request by the applicant and provides city analysis of the standard consistency with other documents and impact. So the applicant needs a, to request a deviation in the maximum building size because under our city design standards, we limit ground floor commercial tenant space to fifteen thousand square feet. I, um, I believe the intent of this code was to limit big box retail and also to scale buildings appropriately, um, for the, for different sites and for, for North Bend. The development does meet all the other bulk and dimensional and density requirements. We have a floor area ratio, um, and they will, um, continue through design review, um, like I said, through that building permit stage, as well as meeting all the other city codes. Um, they also have, we also put into the development agreement a deviation from the parking lot landscaping requirements in regard, in regards to landscape islands and then the build two line, um, having the ability to push that back a little bit, um, where they're proposing a flagpole in kind of a quaffa area in the front. Um, those could be approved administratively, but it was part of their package and we just wanted you to be aware of those deviations, so we put them in. Um, like I said, there was one email of support for the project that was provided, um, during the development agreement public hearing notice and one letter with questions, um, that was also provided. These were emailed to you guys this afternoon and they're, um, printed and were distributed out tonight. Um. One other item, um, that we want to propose is an amendment. Um, I passed out a revision to the development agreement. Um, we have a complete street deferred improvement agreement and no protest that we would like them to sign. And we want that to be added to the development agreement to ensure that the city has a, a financial assurance that they will pay into the street improvement program rather than constructing the improvements themselves. Um, that shows up on page, uh, four, section nine.
So that leads into the, I, what I mentioned is we're doing a North Bend Way complete street corridor plan and we don't want them to build anything that we have to then tear out and rebuild. So we want them just to participate and defer the improvement until the plan is completed. Also, it offers a scaling option that we can do a bigger project when we have a bigger area and each one would end up paying for themselves. So they'll still be responsible for the payment. We just won't have a, an island of sidewalk bills and we can assure it'll go to the new standard once it's adopted.
Mm-hmm. Um, so finally, you know, an important element of, of a development agreement is the benefit it provides for the city, um, for us being flexible in certain adopted standards. My understanding from the applicant, and they can answer questions and, and speak for themselves as well, is that they're leasing space for their business in Issaquah and they purchased this land, um, in North Bend and really wish to relocate their land to our community. They have provided an economic model which estimates twelve employees will work at this location with first year sales forecasted at five million. The development does provide an opportunity for a new retail use with, um, within an existing underperforming commercial site. Um, North Bend would likely receive in the range of fifty-seven thousand per year based on tax revenue as well as impact fees from the project are currently estimated at two hundred and forty-three thousand, four thirty-five. That would be finalized, um, permit details, everything, um, such as a stormwater, fire, transportation. Also have different charges for permitting in the city. Um, and I would note that they are in Salau Water Association and they do have, um, uh, an active connection. So. I guess that's about all I would have to say at this point. You can answer any questions. Um, we are hoping if you guys are comfortable, you could provide a recommendation tonight. This would then be brought up to the CED council committee. Approval of a development agreement is required by city council following your recommendation.
Okay, we can open it up?
Yeah, you could open the public hearing.
Right now? You can either open the public hearing or you can ask questions.
Of, yeah.
Of us or the applicant.
Yeah, whichever order you would like.
Um, let's open the public hearing because then we can just ask questions and question about everything. Is there any public that would like to comment on this DA with Bakes Marina?
Hmm, well, I can either comment or you can answer the questions I submitted.
Go ahead and open it and get some of that.
Okay, yeah, let's just open it. Let's just open it at, uh, seven fourteen, just.
And this is a three-minute comment period, so it's not supposed to be a back and forth.
Okay.
Um, I think that's why we emailed you to ask if you had separate comments to provide. But feel free to, again, state your name and address and provide your comments on the proposed project.
My name is Kenneth Nero. I live at one one six one Forrester Boulevard southwest in North Bend, Washington. Uh, I submitted these questions because I have concerns about the development, pretty much from A to D. I guess not wanting to leave property in, uh, Issaquah, but I don't get it. I mean, first of all, I don't think a deviation is the right terminology when you change the square footage by a hundred and eleven percent. That's just offensive to me. Now, maybe the lawyer says it's okay, but I'll bet the people in North Bend don't understand that as a deviation. That's just a comment. Further that, if the building specifications were determined based on some information or some plan or some good practices, why aren't they being adhered to? I mean, they exist for a reason, is that right?
You can finish all of your questions and then.
Well, I can just read down the list, you know, if that's what you want. Um, how much water consumption is allotted for this development? And how much will the deviation increase, increase the water consumption? Since we have a questionable water supply plan, in my opinion. I asked what the specification was for water use for the allow fifteen thousand square feet. I'm concerned about expected traffic increase. If you're going to have five million dollars in sales, where's the people going to drive from and to? Where's the trucks drive from and to? How do they get on and off that very small roadway there? That road may need meet some requirements for the city or the state in terms of width, but it's not going to be very favorable for LTL trucks turning on and off of it. I drove up there today just to make sure it wasn't where I thought it was. Along with LTL traffic or increased traffic on that roadway, what's the noise specification for this type of zoning? You know, there are residential properties right behind this property and there are nice residential properties right behind those. I don't know. And I, and maybe just as a point of order, I'm confused, right? I mean, I understand that Mr. Baker can have his marine and watercraft business anywhere he wants. What's the closest body of water to North Bend that allows you to use a watercraft with a motor on it? Because it doesn't rattle State Lake. It doesn't check the Morris reservoir. You got to go clear over the summit to get the lakes on the other side and you got to haul all the way to Issaquah to get to Semenage. So what, I don't get it, what's the point? Well, I have a watercraft sales center fifteen miles or seventeen miles from the nearest body of water where you can put a watercraft with an engine on it. I'm just confused. None of my business really, I'm just confused.
If you can go ahead and wrap up your comment.
I'm done.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll say one thing, hopefully I'll get some answers, right? Because the town hall meeting was not forthcoming with regard to answers.
Okay. Anybody else, members of the public, like to comment?
Be online.
Would anyone online like to unmute and provide any comment?
Do you want to take any comment?
Here we go.
Well, I, I, I'm not going to make a comment. I'll, I'll answer all of these questions, um, because I'm the one who's directing that. But, uh, you can take the public comment first. I, you know, I, I just wanted to.
Go ahead and close the public comment. Thank you, uh, Mr. Baker. We'll go ahead and close, close the public comment because we don't have any other public.
Okay, so seven nineteen, we're going to close public comment and now we will have a discussion about it. Um, we can start with you, Mr. Baker, if you want to answer some of these questions.
Yeah, um, I, I think, um, Mr. Nero has kind of has a misconception of actually what we do. So, um, you know, a big part of what happens in North Bend will be the online store. So there really isn't any LTL traffic there. Um, the size of the building is actually to have, you know, storage for, inside storage for boats, because there's really no outside storage you want to have there. And, um, to the point of where the boating goes on is true. You know, there's a lot of our customers that live on the west side and boat on the east side. So this would be a place where they would, um, keep their boats and use them, you know, two or three weeks a year, take them over to eastern Washington and so forth. So if you think about the size of the building, um, if you think of a boat, uh, our style boats, uh, take about three hundred square feet and, which means you're going to have seventy to seventy-five, uh, to seventy-five, uh, boats inside. So that's the number of, of people that we can serve, seventy, seventy-five people, uh, going in and out, maybe four times a year, kinda thing like that. The rest of the building, um, is, uh, we do canvas manufacturing, bimini tops, uh, things like that, and we would move that from Issaquah to North Bend. Uh, our online store, uh, is, you know, mostly small packages, shipping, UPS is our largest supplier, it's a convenient spot for that. Um, you know, we ship all over the world, so where the lakes are relative to North Bend is completely irrelevant. Um, the other, you know, I did wanna address the other two things. The, the parking island was simply because when people do drop off boats, if you're trying to drive with truck and trailer, uh, the typical person, you know, is not gonna, uh, be able to go around islands very well without driving over them. You know, we've, we've seen that before. Um, I, it, it seemed Mr. Nero's comments were directed mostly at the size, which, so hopefully I've directed that. Uh, the planning area in the front was, was really just to have artwork and a planting area and just to make it look nice, but, you know, we can take that out if that's, um, uh, not what you're looking for. Um, as far as traffic, we're actually a very low-traffic type business, we're, um, it, it's, it's not the kind of thing that you see like a big box store, it's more, um, people buy online, they call in, uh, that sort of thing. So it's a once-a-day pickup with USPS and UPS are our big ones, we don't do a lot of FedEx, but, um, you know, that's, that is the business model. Uh, North Bend actually is a, a great location on Interstate ninety, and, um, it, so, i- and, and it's, it really is exactly in line with where we do business.
Thank you. Um, any members of the commission, have any questions or discussion?
Or Mr. Baker. Or Mr. Baker. Or if you wanna answer any additional questions.
Uh, do you have plans also, cause you mentioned to store boats, do you have plans also to wash those boats there?
Um, not really, that's, um, I've been really involved with, uh, Northwest Meat Trade Association and all of the marinas and all of that, and washing boats is a very specific thing, where you wanna have, um, pits that if you do like pressure washing or anything like that. Uh, invasive species are really, um, difficult in Washington now, and I don't know if anybody's driven east of the mountains, but there's places where you, um, stop and have your boat inspected. So if, if any kind of cleaning that was done, it would, it would need to be inside or in a contained area, and that's just not the kinda thing that, um, we had in mind for the business.
Okay. And my, also, I have a concern about this deviation. I, I also, I don't agree with this, this is not a deviation on the size of the, and my concern is for, like, further development, if they ask also, okay, I, I need a deviation on the size of the, like, further properties, and, uh, this can be a precedent for other developments, so this is, uh, I, I think this is not a deviation. This is like a, a request, uh, a request to double the size of the, the building based around the, on the plant that you already have. So I think this concerns a lot, and I think Mr. Kennedy's right on his question, this, this is, is a, something that concerns me in the future.
Yeah, so historically, we've had lots of conversations here on the planning commission about this DA setting precedent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that definitely is one way to look at it, cause they can't, can't seem like that. Um, a lot of times, though, it helps to try something and see if you like it before you change the code. Cause if, if it's built and it's beautiful and it's not in the way and it doesn't have any negative impacts, then maybe it's not a bad idea to allow bigger buildings. Um, but if it's built and we hate it and we regret it, then we know, like, yeah, we're never gonna do that again, because look at about one time we did. So that's, I'm, I'm kind of in the middle for DA's. I do see the precedent, I can see where it can be a slippery slope. But I also like the trial of not having to commit to changing the code for something.
I have a question for the applicant. Um, if we did not grant this, well, if we did not recommend granting this development agreement, would you use any, so you bought the property, would you use any outdoor storage if you did not, if you were not granted this? Cause you were mentioning that wasn't in your plan.
Uh, well, it's my understanding that that's not allowed, so, um, I guess I hadn't considered it before. Um, the, if you don't grant it, you know, we, and we can't build, then we don't build. I mean, I, it's, that's a pretty simple question.
And then from your site plan, I noticed you said that you had twelve employees, but you have thirty parking spaces behind the gate designated as employee parking. So why so much parking for employees if you only have thirty, or if you only have twelve? And it's gated, that's why, that's why I'm specifically asking about that.
Uh, I don't think we designate it as, as employee, it was probably possibly employee or other. The reason the gate is there is that if somebody is driving back over the mountains after their week in Chelan, and they wanna drop a boat off, we didn't wanna have access, um, at least not secured access, or unsecured access, sorry, um, that they could, they could, they could get in and, um, somebody else's boat maybe wasn't there. So we wanted to have enough that you could pull off the road with a boat, and so remember, uh, two parking places is only one parking place if you've got a boat. Um, and, and then we wanted to have the majority of it secured so that, uh, during the day when you're moving boats in and out and, uh, people are picking up. But, but really, I would say we need a quarter of that parking, but that's not part of the code. So we put in the number that's required by the code, but we would use very little of the parking. The parking lot would be more used, uh, to make the ease of moving a boat and trailer around with a, a customer, or, you know, we move them inside with a forklift typically. Um, uh, so, yeah, it's, it's not the number of spaces that we really need, it's, it's more space that we need, uh, so they can kinda be designated any way you prefer, but, um, employees would be there, you know, the accounting department and the, um, sewing shop and, you know, managers and whatever, it's, you know, employees that any business would have, but, um, I, I don't know that thirty inside-outside, it's, it's really a convenience factor and the ability to turn around with a boat and trailer. Did that, I'm not sure that answered the question, but.
It does, yeah, thank you for that clarification. I have other comments, but I don't know if any other commissioners have questions.
No, you can finish, go ahead.
Well, I, I can see, I mean, this is a tricky property, cause it's a unique shape, it is right in between, it's right on the edge of zones, so I understand, you know, how it could work with the neighboring zone, but then at the same time, it's neighboring, well, it is, uh, neighborhood business, which I looked up the definition of neighborhood business, and the definition, if I look closer, it's intended as general commercial areas that allow buildings that are smaller in scale than other districts. So neighborhood business accommodates a variety of residential and other land uses, including limited light manufacturing when conducted in isolation from residential zoning districts. So looking at the site plan, knowing that about neighborhood business, and there's an overlay right adjacent to this property for, you know, a master design plan, um, like the Tanner, I forget what it's called, but the Tanner overlay. Um, and then there's only a ten-foot setback from parking next to that overlay, and so that feels, it feels very, you know, like it doesn't, those, those uses don't feel like they go together, especially in this case where the size is double. While I hope that this business for anybody, anybody starting a business, I wish them the best and I hope that they have success with their business, but we're not just approving the business, this runs with the land. And so this warehouse, that building is going to be there, and so that's something bigger than just, you know, just boats, okay? Boats aren't so bad, maybe they don't have a lot of traffic, but the building will be there, and if, and hopefully not, but if something happened to this business, then anybody else could go in and use this big warehouse, when that doesn't meet what the city was planning for this area, where we did want a neighborhood business where it's a smaller scale, and I think that a community would support a smaller-scale business, and we've seen some businesses coming, the pub is right next to it, so it would support a smaller business, and that seems fitting there. Um, I know, I might have other things to say too, but I can stop there for a minute.
What's the, what's the building size, uh, when we talk about the fifteen thousand for the, for, uh, neighborhood business? What is it for EP two?
Uh, EP is twenty thousand. But to be clear, that's, a business could have a larger square foot if it was, was able to be a business that has two stories, that's just the first floor square footage.
Right.
So it's not limiting total square feet, it's just limiting first floor in our current design standards.
Is this, is this DA in any way connected to, I mean, extreme example would be like, oh, they're not here anymore, like, we're gonna tear the building down, obviously not, but kind of what Commissioner Seale was saying, if Bakes goes away in a year, are we stuck with this big building and that somebody else can do something else in that maybe we are as supportive of?
Well, the use would still have to meet our code, so it'd still have to be an allowable use, it would still have to meet the requirement, but the building, they would be able to occupy the building, cause the underlying, the building would have been approved properly. But it couldn't just become, like, a, the whole thing couldn't become a warehouse, because we don't allow the entire building to be a warehouse. So there, there, they still have to meet our, our standards in our code and uses in our code, for the, for the interior use.
Yeah, and it probably wouldn't be able to become like a really intense retail place, cause it doesn't have the parking for it.
Right, so, so there would be limitations on who could occupy the building, cause it was, it would have to meet the requirement.
The stipulation attached to the DA would not live with the land and the building permanently ready.
So a DA usually expires once it's developed and it's fulfilled its obligation under the DA.
But it, any subsequent, you know, buyer?
Yes.
If they would have?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't have to tear the building down.
Right.
They could occupy the building.
Run with the land.
Yes, well, it, not the same way, I mean, it runs with the land through the expiration of the DA.
Okay.
Um, there's nothing in this DA that is, like, the times that I see a DA run longer is if there's like.
Affordability?
Affordable, yes, like a housing, when you have a housing DA and it's got affordability, that'll have a longer, you know, either forever or twenty-year term or a fifty-year term. When it's a DA usually related specifically to development, once the, the site is fully developed, then the DA has been fulfilled and is done.
Right, but it's not like it's going to be torn down.
Correct.
Like, the, the building is there.
But, right, then it, then it becomes legal non-conforming.
Exactly.
Yes.
And so then we have a legal non-conforming if, if something happened again, and hopefully nothing ever would, but, but, that's how life goes, so.
Correct.
Do we have, um, any, or city code with against storage? Cause we mentioned outside storage, and Mr., we do, we do, right?
Yes, for outdoor storage, correct.
Outdoor storage, we do.
I'm a sad, and we prefer things happen in buildings, so.
Well, also really nice boats, probably shouldn't sit outside.
Yeah, I think that's what he was saying, he was like, you didn't, no one's gonna rent if you're, no one's gonna store their boat if it's sitting outside. It's the business model.
Um, does Salau have water for them?
They have provided a certificate of availability.
Okay.
And the improvement, if there is a pay-in, when, you know, when the improvements are done, that, would that cover this property, or would it go into a pot that would probably cover a different property?
No, it would cover this property. So it, it, and that is a, this DA requires them to sign a separate agreement that is, would be longer than the DA if required. So it, it, it wouldn't, because the DA expires, doesn't mean the other agreement would expire related to the frontage improvements.
How does that work in the long term? So let's say they pay their frontage improvements upfront, but we're not gonna build it until we have a plan, and then our plan takes ten years, and everything's more expensive, we're, we're not gonna go back for, ask for more money, or?
Correct, so there's, there's a balance of things are more expensive, but you also save money when you do it in bigger projects.
Yeah.
So there, there's an economy of scale, so yes, depending on how long, everything goes up, but it's also, there, it's offset a little bit by an economy of scale.
So, this isn't necessarily, this is more a question that city council can look into more, so, but out of curiosity, how does the impact fees and the fees that the city would benefit from, from this, uh, how does it differ from a different use that, um, that would also be allowed by code?
I, um.
Some square footage, so this would have paid more because we're allowing more square footage. Um, some of them are based on, um.
Impact is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the impact fees is a one-time fee that we get, I think it's more the, like, the economic model and the, is there a point of sale? So if you have just an office building and you have employees, but you don't have a product, you know, in this case, there is a product, um, there's businesses probably with more product, but it, um, that's where we see a benefit to the city when there's a sale happening in the city.
Ongoing revenue versus.
And then we get that tax and we, um, get that benefit in addition to employees and improvement to property. So every project's gonna be different, you know?
What is the percentage of sales tax that we get as a city?
Free, do you know that?
I'm asking. Okay, I'm, I'm only asking, cause this fifty-seven thousand seems really light.
Maybe, uh, Mr. Baker knows.
Well, it's gonna have, yeah, part of it is, you have to go.
I mean, I, there's, uh, state sales tax, which I'm not positive, but I think it's like six and a half percent right now, and then, uh, typically there's county and the local, so, um, I'm not sure what King County takes, but, uh, like, for instance, in Issaquah, I think we're at ten-point-one right now, and, uh, North Bend is some, nine-something maybe, um, so each.
We don't get, we get a full nine percent, I think we get like one percent.
Yeah.
You're wondering what the city's got.
Yeah, so I think the city's portion is like one percent.
Okay.
But don't quote me on that, cause I'm guessing, I'm not a finance.
Yeah, I do have concern, you know, just, I mentioned the landscaping next to the neighborhood, right next to it, and that, that is concerning to decreased landscaping on a bigger use, because it does impact the neighbors more. Um, if, you know, something like this, I think that I would feel more comfortable going forward with it if, you know, if we could beef up the landscaping, if there was like something that could.
You could require a higher level of landscaping in exchange for?
And just to clarify, they will meet the perimeter width, um, and it is an NV zone to an NV, it has that overlay, but zoning-wise, um, uh, so they will meet that, and we've asked for that in the first, um, round of comments, where it does touch that overlay, um, it has to be increased, um, to ten, otherwise I think it can be five, um, but where they've asked for a reduction is those, um, the landscape holes.
But you, you can absolutely condition or add a, a spot where they have to go, a type-one landscaping as an example.
So I, I can make a comment on that. Uh, when we, when we, uh, first had it designed and it, um, was designed to the code by our architect, they had, they went to the code which was a minimal amount, and we increased it, I think to fifteen feet, uh, because of that very thing, is we said, we don't really need it against the building as much as we, we would want it on that, that side, because, um, the neighbors up there, I mean, I've driven up there, I mean, you, obviously you have the tavern in the front, but the, the back portion of the property, I think there's only two homes, but we, we increased the size of that. But we, we increased the size of that, um, landscaping on that side, also because we didn't need it on the east side of the building, because all, the only thing there is a tilt-up concrete building that's, I don't know, forty or fifty thousand square feet. So there wasn't a need, and they're on the, the, there is no setback for them, it might be a foot or two. Uh, and then we have, uh, I believe we put planting along, um, the driveway on the east side of the building. Uh, and tried to move it as far away from that neighborhood as possible. So, so I think we actually, um, went beyond what you asked for, because that's the way we were thinking about it. But, which is also the reason we put more planting in the front, just so that it, you didn't see the front of the building so much. And, uh, I think your setback was lower than we thought it should be, because, I mean, we're in a business where people, um, buy products because of the way they look and all of that. And, and so we want our image to be that as well. But, um, I mean, that, that, all of that part is, is totally fine. We, I think we, we tried to meet that criteria before we even applied. So what you're seeing is something two to three times what the code requires.
Are you guys feeling like it's, the building is just too massive? Like, it's just a big building?
I'm not concerned about the building, I'm, I'm concerned about like new developments. Uh, I'm not, also, nothing against it, the business, I'm really welcome to new business to the city, it's really important. I concern it for further development, and, uh, is there any, I mean, will there any impact on the, uh, North Bend way? Any improvement that will be done to the North Bend?
As we mentioned with this one, because we're having future, um, improvement plans, they would just pay. Because we don't want them to improve it to current standards, we want it to be improved to future standards. So yes, they would pay their fair share for their lineal footage that they have on North Bend way.
Um, yeah, the initial traffic analysis, um, does not show any trigger of, um, additional improvements needed beyond paying that fee.
Beyond our street standards.
And, yeah, as you can imagine, it's, it's kind of out there along that long stretch of North Bend way. So that's a benefit, um, it's not over here by the intersection that's, you know, stop and go traffic. And, um, so yeah, getting that road built out to full standard with some center turn lanes and things like that will help. Um, and their access is only onto North Bend way, so they don't back to Hundred Fortyth, which is-
Mm-hmm.
Something we come across a lot, um, as a conflict, you know, consideration, when you've got the residential back there.
Yeah, I just, for the amount of landscaping I would want, to like have a buffer, I just don't see how it would even fit on the site. Uh, unless parking was removed, but you'd need that parking to maneuver the boat.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, like you said, the site plan shows ten feet type two, you could go to a type one, which increases the density-
Right.
Of landscaping.
I do understand, I, I, I understand ten feet too.
Mm-hmm.
It's just not very much. And, and it's not, it's not necessarily just this use, it's, you know, future uses and future planning. When we have, we have the code for a neighborhood business with an overlay right next to it. And, and it just feels like, I don't know, we're sacrificing that zone. Granted, I understand, it's right next to a zone that it works in. And again, I, I actually think the site plan is great, they did a great job working with it. I think that it'll be a nice building, I think that their landscaping will be great. I, I do think it's a great project, I just don't feel like this is the right thought for it, just because of zoning.
I tend to kind of disagree there, I think that the EP one and what this is bringing in is exactly what you want on North Bend way. Right? The fact that it's, it's zoned as neighborhood business is a technicality to me, based on what you want that road to look like. Right? The, that's kind of what I was asking about, the, the EP two requirement is.
Mm-hmm.
It does have, it's next to a building that's even bigger, it's already there. That's definitely exactly what we, that, in my mind, what you want North Bend way to become, is that industrial kind of zone. If it, employment park zone, whatever you wanna call it, that is commercial and does have some frontage, like care office sales and stuff like that. But it's meant to be more business. I, I care a lot, lot less about what it currently is zoned in, it's more the idea. Having said that, I hate DAs. So, uh, I guess my next question, the one that I keep kicking around is, can we discuss the idea of the five-foot setback on the right side? The east side of the property?
Mm-hmm, we can discuss it, the issue is the easement. There's not much movement, because there's an existing easement.
Right, I'm thinking getting rid of it.
Oh.
If we moved, took that five feet from the east and put it to the west, moved everything five feet east.
I don't think they can move the building, because the building's at the easement limit.
Right, as far as it goes, okay.
You, you could see the blue line runs right at the edge of the building. So, yes, you can remove the landscaping and put pavement, but you wouldn't be able to put it on the other side.
That's, yeah, that's true.
Right at the easement line, I remember we discussed that when we did, when we looked at it at the pre-ep.
Yeah, because we kind of agree too, I mean, it's, it's masking the building that's there.
We had the exact same thought, but we can't, you can't move it beyond the easement line, so.
Okay.
That's a great thought.
Putting in five foot triple inch, just dumb. Um, yeah, I guess, for, for me, like I said, I'm, I'm a really big advocate against DAs. I, I think that's on record already. But I, I, I hate, the reason I hate them, honestly, is it's a big empty lot. This is a, there should be a use there.
Right.
Um, and I hate that, that it puts me into this conundrum of, I don't like DAs, I don't like making that, that, setting that slipper slope. I don't like setting precedent to allow something like this. But at the same time, I like the, the plan of what's going in there. I like the idea of where it is, obviously, it's tough to say, it'd be nice to go somewhere else, because he owns this land.
Right.
Right, that's a tough thing to be like, hey-
Totally.
Sorry, you bought that land, but we're not gonna let you do what you need to do. Right? So.
And that's a, you know, I know you hate DAs, but that's exactly how our code is written for DAs. That, you know, it specifically says, that a development, um, agreement may allow for development standards different from those otherwise imposed under our municipal code, in order to provide flexibility to achieve public benefits, respond to changing community needs, and encourage modifications that provide the functional equipment equivalent, or adequately achieve the purch, the purpose of otherwise applicable city standards.
Yes, I put you into that situation of, from, probably at least from my point of view, that I like what they've done here. I think this is a good opportunity to put something on land that's not being utilized right now, and bring in, I don't care about the revenue. But the, uh, you know, I care about utilizing land that the city is currently not doing anything with. The, I don't like eyesore, but it's just a big empty lot. So I like bringing in business, I like bringing in what I think that, that road is meant to be. Uh, double the size, I'm, I'm glad you're saying it's storage, because that was an issue. I don't care as much if it's storage, but there's not really a mechanic for us to say, it has to stay that way. Right?
Except for our current allowed uses. So we kind of can say what we want it to look like, or say like, even if Mr. Baker, Baker were to leave, because there are certain things you just can't do there.
Yeah, but there's also a lot of things that we, that you could use that would be louder, that would be more of an effective, you know, affect the neighbors more than the storage would do. Right, there's, and there's not a really, other than, like you said, it makes it a nonconforming use. All the houses that are there are nonconforming use of their neighborhood business zone.
Yes.
Right? So it's, yeah, it's, it's tough for me, because I don't like setting that, that long-term expectation of that we're okay with what's here, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can stop something we don't want in the future.
Is there a way that we can adopt something more long-term?
You can review the code and decide what you want in the future, and our development standards are not specific to this site, yeah.
Yeah, hard to tie it to them.
I have a question for Mr. Baker. Uh, can you explain how the storage works? Um, I'm not a boat person, so I don't know, like, do people just come once a year, take their boat out for the summer or whatever, and then come back in the fall, at the end of the season, and put it back? Or is it an in-and-out several times a summer type of deal?
We've done it, uh, both ways. So, uh, in the past, what we've done is a one-time in, one-time out. And, uh, so people would store their boats for seven months and, uh, never come by. And we would take them out, and then we'd de-winterize them, uh, because in Washington, it does freeze. So we de-winterize them, make sure they're running fine. They would have the boat then for the summer, uh, a little bit longer here, because the seasons are a little longer. And then it would come back in. That's, that's what we've done in the past. Um, this, uh, this area does lend itself to having more, um, uh, more in and outs. So, so you might have three to five times a year. I mean, I, I, I don't know what each individual customer would wanna do, but, but, um, most people don't use their boats that much, and it's, it's because the people that can afford these kind of boats don't really have that much time. Uh, it's unfortunate that we all work more than we should, and, and, you know, I, it's, you know, story of all of our lives, I think. But, um, so they might, uh, be planning for a week or two week, uh, family vacation, and they go to Coeur d'Alene, they go to Ponderay, they go to Chelan. Um, and, and if you look at all the CCNRs of most, uh, homes these days, there is no place to store your boat. You can't store it outside, uh, the garages are too small to store them inside. And, you know, you can't really put a, a gate in your fence and park it in the backyard, because most neighborhoods don't allow that. So, um, you know, one of the reasons we chose North Bend was because of kind of the pride of gateway to recreation. And, and it re, actually, it really is, because a lot of people that live in large homes on the west side, they, um, well, actually, I guess it's the east side of Seattle, but what we call the west side of the mountains. Um, they would take their boats and go on vacation, and, and that's kind of how our service has, has lent itself over the years. It's, it's kind of a concierge service, so, yeah, you don't use it that often. But when you do, you want the boat to be nice, you don't want it to have sat outside, you want the battery to be charged, you want all of that. And that's the kind of business that, that we've had now for thirty-five years in Issaquah. So it's, um, I think North Bend is, is kind of the, the future. And, um, the fact that people go someplace to boat isn't for us to say, you know. Not everybody can afford to live on a lake, especially a lake that you can use boats. You know, Sumamish and Washington are, are out of, you know, the, the reach of most people. And, yeah, most people I know, for sure. And so, uh, our business really lends itself to being in North Bend. And, and, um, you know, we thought it was a good use, but, you know, that, really, this, this, is what this meeting is about, is your recommendation of whether you think, uh, we should be there. And, and, and really, you know, is it gonna change my lifestyle if you say no, and we can't move there and all that? Probably not, because I'm old and not gonna live that much longer. But I think, I think, you know, there's a lot of people, um, our children, you know, our, our customers' children, you know. It, it is a lifestyle, it's, it's something you, you work hard, and then you get on your boat and, and you're relaxing. You know, during the pandemic, you were, um, socially isolating yourself from everybody else when you were on your boat. And so it was still an activity that you could do. I, it's, you know, uh, for people that don't boat, the first time they get out on one, they, they think it's remarkable what it's like. And, uh, it's, for me, it's been fortunate that, you know, I, I'm a captain, so I work on big boats. And, and, uh, I get to see this every day. And, uh, so this business is, is kind of lent itself to a, a lifestyle of people that work really hard and, and make a lot of money. But, but also want to be able to share time with their family and their children before it's too late, which it is for a lot of people.
He brings up a good point, this, this business, our outdoor recreation, does line up with our guidelines. And the kinds of businesses we wanna bring, like, just like Care Quorum, and, you know, we want outdoor businesses that support outdoor recreation. Even though we don't have a lake, but you can put the boats on.
I really like that aspect of it, I think it fits with the character of the community.
I think too, we, we're not approving, I mean, we're approving the use, but we have no guarantee that that use is going to stay.
Pay forever, yeah.
And so, and, you know, again, it's a big building, so if there are uses that are allowed in the zone, but they don't meet the parking, then it's just an empty building. But that becomes an eyesore if it's just left empty. It's a big, huge building right there.
What, what, remind me, refresh my memory, what's the difference between type two and type one?
Landscaping type one is the most, um-
Dense.
Dense, it's, it's hard to see through. So it's just a shrub tree ratio.
The, the Dogger property did, right, they did a type one, they planted a-
I think they were on a-
Yeah.
And then like Chanel were-
Right, they were, they were, yeah.
Okay.
Is this used allowed in the EP two zone?
I don't know why they use, wouldn't be allowed.
Right. Right, I mean, I wouldn't advise to, but.
But they would still be here for a DA for the building side.
Uh-huh.
Because the, the maximum's twenty thousand, and it's bigger, but not-
That's surprising.
Right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think EP two and one, both are the, for that. Again, you know, from the planning perspective, it's in a building, which is desirable to come into North Bend. Pass, car, boat locks, or snowmobile locks, you know. And with our weather, I think it is desirable for them to have it inside as well.
Right, I would agree, I think inside is definitely preferable.
Yeah, and that's where our design standards really push hard on design of the building, so that it meets the standards and-
And it's kind of a interesting situation on how we're, we're, we are interpreting our code extra carefully. Uh, well, it, so in the EP two zone, the limit for square footage is only retail, not retail and commercial. So this, I guess, the argument would be then, then yes, this would be allowed in the EP zone, because the retail portion would be under twenty thousand square feet. But in the North Bend zone, the IC zone, the IMU, and the DC zone, all the other zones specifically list ground floor retail or commercial. But in the EP zone, it does not reference commercial-only retail limitations.
So they could possibly, you know, petition for a zone change, and then they would fit the code.
Mm-hmm. Well, and you guys can recommend a zone change as we do our comp plan update coming forward. Even if you did approve this now, you could be recommending a change to our land use code and zoning map as we do our comp plan update over the next two years as well.
Right.
Because we probably aren't taking any zone changes and comp plan changes while we're in the process of starting to update this. So basically, in a two-year, possibly two-year moratorium of, of comp plan adjustments, because we'll be going through a big process on our land use. Any other questions? Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Is, um-
Anything else can you talk about today?
With, to ask for recommendations.
Well, that's, that's the question, do you guys, is there anything you guys, you're not required to make a recommendation today. You can continue, but I haven't heard anything that you guys need from us to bring back that would warrant another meeting. So if you guys are ready to make a recommendation, whichever direction you are, then we absolutely can move forward with the recommendation.
Now, can we make a recommendation, like, so, my idea would be removal of that eastern border and in exchange, making the western border a type one.
Yes.
So thickening the, densening up the western border between the residential, and in exchange for removing the eastern landscape buffer between the two buildings, that in my opinion, doesn't make sense.
So, we're gonna, we're not gonna move the building, because we can't, so what are we gonna do here?
Just go- And it would expand the sidewalk, see a wider driveway.
And then we're gonna take all the landscaping and make it more dense here, but it's still five feet, right?
It's ten, no, it's ten feet.
Oh, it's gonna be-
Ten, you don't know what, it already is ten feet.
We can't expand it, but we can make it denser. In exchange, removing the, the east ones for me, just because I think it's really stupid, to put a five-foot strip of land in between two buildings, that's just gonna be, end up being shrub, and grass, crap. It's a road, let it be a road.
Okay, so we have a recommendation? Is there a second?
Okay, um, all in favor for this new motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Aye, I said aye.
Okay, I couldn't hear, that's why I wanna make sure we verbalize, I heard it to the head, so, okay.
So it looks like the motion passes, uh, four to one.
That's it, so if you wanna-
Okay.
Adjournment time.
Okay, since we don't have to make a motion to adjourn, we can go ahead and call eight oh one, our adjournment time. The October thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.